All right, I have the time at 2:00. We'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. I'm going to call the Planning Commission, regular meeting today, Tuesday, March 4th, at 2:00 to order. Stephanie, why don't we go ahead and do roll call?
Here.
Commissioner Hall?
Here.
Commissioner McElina?
Here.
Commissioner Richardson?
Here.
Commissioner Rigsby?
Here.
Absent is Commissioner Williams and Commissioner Baum. Also present is Stephanie and Alex for the Community Development Department, and you do have a call.
Sweet. All right, at this time, if there are any conflicts of interest from the board, it would be wise to declare them?
None.
None.
All right, sounds good. Then let's go to the second bullet point, certification of compliance with Resolution 2025-01. Stephanie?
I do certify that the meeting and properties were posted in accordance with Resolution 2025-01 in Section 5440 of the municipal code.
Great, awesome. Approval of agenda would be the next item?
I move that we approve the agenda for Tuesday, March 4th, 2025.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that? Seeing none, we'll move to a roll call vote.
Commissioner Byers?
Aye.
Commissioner Hall?
Aye.
Commissioner McElina?
Aye.
Commissioner Richardson?
Aye.
Commissioner Rigsby?
Aye.
And also, I apologize, I do need to make a statement that there is an item listed on the agenda that will not be heard today. Case C is not included in the packet and will not require a hearing today.
You said C?
C.
Yes. So if I could get an amended motion to approve the agenda minus item C.
I move that we approve the agenda for Tuesday, March 4th, 2025, with the exception of item C being removed.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All right, let's vote on the amendment. You have a motion?
The minute?
Yeah, let's vote on that amendment.
Oh, okay. Commissioner Byers?
Aye.
Commissioner Hall?
Aye.
Commissioner McElina?
Aye.
Commissioner Richardson?
Aye.
Commissioner Rigsby?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Cool. Now we got an updated agenda. Let's move to approval of minutes for the regular meeting on February 4th, 2025. Any clarifications or changes?
No, I saw none. I make the motion for approval of meeting from the regular, approval of the minutes of the meeting from the regular meeting of February 4th, 2025.
Second. Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, let's move to a roll call vote.
Commissioner Byers?
Aye.
Commissioner Hall?
Aye.
Commissioner McElina?
Aye.
Commissioner Richardson?
Aye.
Commissioner Rigsby?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Sweet. So today is the 4th of November. All right, I'm going to sign this, and then we'll move into public input, number five. So at this time, we're going to open it up for public input. For those in the audience, this public input is for anything that's not listed on the agenda. So if you're here to speak on one of the items that we have listed on our agenda, you'll get your opportunity to provide your two cents. If not, now would be the time to bring another issue or any other topic to this commission. And online are all those applicants?
They are.
Stephanie? Okay, sounds good. We'll go ahead and close public input and move on to our quasi-judicial public hearings. The first one, conditional use, CU 2025-12. Stephanie, what can you tell us about this?
This case being heard today is a conditional use request for an accessory structure to be placed prior to the primary structure. This property is located at 300 Pine. The proposal for the structure is a 12 by 32 shed. The intent for the applicant is to utilize this structure and convert it into a primary residence. So in efforts to allow the structure to remain and obtain the proper building permits for the conversion, this was the avenue afforded by the municipal code. Present today, we do have via Zoom Mr. Adler and Representative Mr. Liam Griffin for questions.
Okay, great. Thank you, Stephanie, for that overview. Mr. Adler, I see you on Zoom. If you'll raise your right hand and say you'll tell the truth and nothing but the truth. Do you swear to tell the? Okay, thank you, Mr. I got you as affirmative. Mr. Griffin, will you be up front taking questions, or will you also be presenting?
Yes, sir.
Okay, why don't you come forward, and we'll have you raise your hand, swear in two. Just state your name, and you'll swear to tell the truth.
My name is William Griffin, and I swear to tell the truth.
Thank you, Mr. Griffin. All right, we'll start with hearing the request from either yourself or the applicant. Either one would work for us, just to hear a little bit more, and then we'll go from here.
Thank you. I'll take that invitation, and I'll just tell you that this application, you may recognize 300 Pine, it's been before you before, and we have to confess that we jumped the gun, and I think that that caused some consternation. The prefabricated building was delivered prior to the application actually being drawn. So what we've done is we withdrew from that position, and we're gone into one of negotiation. We spent some time with Ms. Warren and Mr. Koenig in my office. We also have an appeal, an active appeal of the denial of the initial variance that we applied for. But your attorney, Zach Cook, and I have launched onto a path that I think is quite productive. I think in the end, what we'll have is a compliant property. But I want you to recognize now, even though that's not what we're here for, I want you to recognize now, it's a non-conforming lot. You know, we've got a $10,000, excuse me, a 10,000-square-foot lot minimum typically in the Village of Rodo, so. But there's also a number of provisions for non-conforming lots. I point out most specifically 54143-J that talks about how you approach a non-conforming lot. And since in 1938, when that plat was drawn, and it was only 4,162 square feet, if we go with that, with what I think that you've established, sort of a minimal footprint on a piece of property would be 10% of its overall square footage. So if you say a 10,000-square-foot lot having 1,000 square foot in R1, typically, I would say that's consistent if you say you've got a 4,162-square-foot lot, approximately 400 square foot small building is what would appropriately fit under there. So those are some of the complications, but I can assure you that as we work through this, we plan on making sure that there's compliance with everything. We're under a timeline, we're under a stay order from the District Court. And I also understand, and I may speak behind me to folks in the crowd who may have complained about the propriety of this as well, since there is a District Court action, those folks, not that I want this, but I want them to know what their rights are, they could intervene in that District Court action and say, since you have this issue before the District Court, we'd like to see something done. But where we are, frankly, is we are on our, basically on our knees in front of you, asking to allow us to continue this path that we've carved out, which is, first of all, and I hope I don't misspeak, and correct me if I do, Ms. Warren, but first of all, all we're really trying to do in this moment is say, this is not the primary structure. We actually disagreed, we had a little debate in my office, Mr. Koenig may recall, about whether this is truly an accessory structure in its purest definition. So if you look at the definitions in Land Use Ordinance 5431, I think it's 5131, 5431-E, an accessory structure is oddly described as an additional structure. And I can assure you that there will be no additional structure, there's no room for an additional structure on this property. So if you approve it to sit where it is now as an accessory structure, Ms. Warren assures us that that's the first step. The next step that we will take is to assure you that that building will comply with all building codes. We've already got Lily Engineer, Engineering has issued a number of certifications, but we're going to do what you ask us to do. We're going to certify what you ask us to certify. And this whole process is not only under your purview, but it's also under the purview of the District Court. So I can assure you and the folks in the audience who may be neighbors of the Adlers that this project will be compliant. And otherwise, I'm certain that we will be in front of you again.
Thank you, Mr. Griffin. Mr. Adler, anything else to add that Mr. Griffin didn't cover?
No, everything's exactly like you said, we plan on making it look really nice.
Okay, thank you. And thank you for that initial opening. At this time, we'll get feedback from the village, and then we'll open it up for public input. This is an opportunity, when we open it up for public input, opportunity for cross-examine, and we'll walk you through that process. But we'll start, Stephanie. Any comments from staff?
So upon review of the application, the staff does find that the request will not adversely impact the health, safety, and general welfare of the occupants of the surrounding land. The proposed request has been thoroughly reviewed and found to provide the applicant the ability to apply for building permits, to bring the accessory structure into compliance with municipal code and building codes, to use the structure as a primary dwelling unit as it was originally intended at the time of the purchase for the land and the structure. Building staff has communicated the requirements of what it will be needed to meet the 2021 IBCs for the conversion of the unit, and will further continue their discussions with the applicant and contractors during the permitting phase. Staff has determined that the two parking spaces provided within the site plan does make him compliant with Section 5440, 141E1A of the municipal code. And one of the conditions that the staff recommends is that the conditional use will expire at the time that the applicant has obtained the certificate of occupancy showing the conversion of the storage unit into a dwelling unit.
Okay, thank you. And it looks like we did mail out 19 letters and had feedback within, from two?
Yes.
Can I speak to those?
We did receive two written objections, both from surrounding neighbors that have been previously involved with the property's request for the case that was heard back in '21. And I have provided the copies for you guys and supplied them to the applicant as well.
Okay, thanks, Stephanie. Okay, at this time, we'll open it up for public input, for folks that want to comment on this particular topic. So if you've signed in and would like to comment for or against this applicant for the conditional use, now would be the time. We will bring you forward, we'll have you raise your hand, and then you can make your claim or statement. Anybody like to comment on this one? Sure, come on down. You don't mind raising your right hand, stating your name, and then promising to tell the truth, nothing but the truth, as you see it.
I promise to tell the truth.
Thank you, Frederick.
I have a property across the street from this structure. I don't, I can't even describe it, it's a house or anything, it's a structure. And the reason I'm here is just, you folks denied it two or three months ago. I feel like you have to do your homework before you purchase a land or a house, you know, within, you have to follow the rules of this community or any community in the U.S. And I think it's still, I mean, I don't want to feel sorry for those folks, but they purchased the land, moved into structure, and then, you know, they find, you know, they ask question afterwards. And they say, oh, we're sorry, we didn't respect the setbacks and so forth and so on. I mean, you know, so sad. We purchased, I personally purchased five homes around this town. You know, we checked if it was lean against the homes, you know, invoices or whatever to payment, payments to do on the lots. You have to do your homework. We went to the, in Carizoso, we check any kinds of rules of relegation. It's too easy to come and say, okay, we're going to move in, you know, do the work, spend the money, I'm sorry they spent that much money, but it's a little too late to say we're sorry. That's all I got to say. And you're setting precedent. You know, if anybody can come in this, in this town, buy a lot, build anything they want, I mean, you know, what's, what's the limit there? What are you, where, where, why are you here for?
Yeah, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comment, I appreciate that. Are there other folks here to comment on this item? Okay, seeing none, Mr. Adler, Mr. Griffin, this would be your opportunity to respond to that individual. And then we will also probably have some questions from the board, if there's nobody else that would like to comment on this item.
Should I come up?
Yeah, please. So I'll open it up, you can respond to Frederick to provide your two cents on his comment, and then we will open it up for the board for questions for you and Mr. Adler.
Thank you, Commissioner. My only comment in response to the citizen's concern is one that I actually encounter quite a bit in my profession. What is the sanction? What is the sanction for non-compliance? And in theory, and I came up with a number of examples, and I won't even, I won't even bore you with them, but theoretically, if someone is in non-compliance with a material concern of the public or even privately in a contract situation, then non-compliance is something that can actually be suggestibly measured. And in this instance, it can also be suggestibly sanctioned. But if we look for a sanction to an entitlement, for instance, let's say somebody applies for a fishing license but gives a bad check, does that mean that they can never have a fishing license after they accidentally wrote a bad check? No, they have to bring themselves into compliance by writing the check. And I think that when somebody's entitled to develop their property, they may make missteps. I think you guys probably see more of it than the rest of us do. In those circumstances, we urge them to seek compliance immediately. And the speed with which they seek compliance is indicative of their interest in doing so, I'm sure. But at the same time, their entitlement hasn't been diluted by a loss of some time or by a mistake. Their entitlement is there, but there should potentially be a sanction. And I looked for one and couldn't find it. Ordinarily, in the legal world, we call it liquidated damages. If you don't do certain things in compliance, we can hit you with a fine for liquidated damages of a predetermined amount so that you won't make this mistake a second time. But in this instance, I don't find one, and I think that that, I think that you guys or your predecessors left that open because you want people to bring their properties into compliance. You don't want to have a spate of salt and pepper non-compliant properties that are forever being undeveloped because of one mistake made back in 1938, when this property was actually so divided. So I would just say, let's, let's say, if there is non-compliance, and I believe there is, what does the board do to ensure compliance? And I think we're doing that now. I think we've got two hard-working village employees that are going to ensure that we are, that we are compliant. So for the moment, I think the citizen is within his rights to say, why are we not following the laws? But I think if we say, what are the laws that we follow in this instance, it's to seek compliance.
Thank you, Mr. Griffin.
Thank you.
Mr. Adler, anything to add?
No, I'm good, thank you.
All right, at this time, I'll open it up, you'll stay right there, there might be some questions for both of you.
Did we close public hearings?
I'm going to go ahead and close public hearing, and we'll open it up to commissioners' questions. I'm going to start with maybe a comment, and then I'll open it up to the commissioners. You gave the example of writing a bad check for a fishing license. You might be able to get a fishing license again, but you're going to get in trouble for that bad check. So I think there's some reconciliation that maybe we can work through today and hopefully come to a resolution. But that's maybe the comment that I'll make on that. And then I'll open it up to the commission for questions for the applicant or Mr. Griffin.
I'll go, first question for staff, I guess they're proposing a wall that's on the property line. Is that a permitted construction within setback, or what should be the setback, building a wall?
Yes, this would propose, may potentially meet all requirements on that. That's not what's being addressed today.
Yeah, just to maybe do a clarification, today, we're just doing a conditional use, so the prior variance isn't in effect, it's just, can this individual put an accessory structure on this property without having a primary structure on this property? And then the assumption being that he's going to make this compliant for a primary structure. My question for staff, this is within an R1, how do you put a manufactured home on an R1 lot? Assuming we grant the conditional use, this is quote-unquote a manufactured home that's going to be placed on R1. So is there specifics within the code that allows for that, or?
For clarification, this would not be a manufactured home, as it's not being brought into building standards of the HUD enactment. This would meet the 2021 IRCs and IBCs, which would inevitably make it closer to a single-family dwelling.
Meaning that it would be on a permanent and permanently attached to a permanent foundation?
Yes.
Okay.
So my question to staff is, you know, if this lot were totally empty right now, and the applicant came before you and said he wanted to move in a tiny house, would that be allowed?
A tiny house, yes. So there are different versions of the structure that is approvable. This particular structure, though, was built under the building guidelines for an accessory structure being a shed.
Right.
So that's where the, the conditional use process is being asked for, so he can do the proper conversions.
So what are the structures, what is the difference between that and a tiny home? What makes a tiny home unique? That I, I can buy any lot in town, and I can put 300-square-foot home on it?
Building code.
Okay.
Yeah, building code and engineering.
And so in theory, I could buy a lot and put two tiny homes on it, one is my primary, one is an ADU, both 300 square feet.
Potentially, depending on your district.
I have a question for staff. Is there a minimum square footage?
Percent to our building code and municipal code, 150 square feet. Anything further than that would be under restrictive covenants.
Okay.
Okay, you said earlier that it had to be a, maybe a certain size or shape. Does the current size and shape comply with that lot?
The current size and shape would meet the definition for R1.
It would meet the definition. So the only hang-up before we had was the fact that it was not a home, and therefore it had to be brought up to those standards, correct?
So the previous hearing was on the variance. So the variance you guys were looking at and said that they had alternative measures to build the property out, that would not necessarily require the encroachment into the setbacks, as they bought the property, knowing that it was substandardly sized. So this, but this case doesn't bring into the account for the setbacks, it'll, it actually will meet the setbacks to the new code because they've been decreased to the 15 feet on street sides. So he'll no longer need a variance, but we do have to come into compliance with the structure type and the allowable uses of R1.
But where it currently sits right now is fine.
Where it currently sits in the pictures is not where I believe is the intended final resting place.
So Stephanie, help me with the logistics of this. To get this up to compliance, he has to pour a foundation or put it on blocks. So he's going to jack this up, put blocks underneath it, connect electrical, collect, connect plumbing, have a kitchen, a full kitchen that is defined by the building code?
Yes, so the dwelling unit requires a separate kitchen and a separate restroom facility. The restroom facility does need to be sectioned off by a closing separate door with a sink not utilized by the kitchen.
And this wouldn't come in front of us if the property didn't have this shed on it today? If he had this in storage somewhere, like you can go down to Almo and store it temporarily somewhere else, he could build what he needs to build, and then he could, in theory, bring this shed fully built out onto this property, and it wouldn't need to come to us at all.
That would be correct. But right now, due to the building code of the current structure's inhabitants, it's a storage shed.
So it's, we're talking about doing a conditional use for a situation that doesn't necessarily have to have a conditional use, because in theory, the shed that's on there now could be removed. He could build the property up to code without us ever getting involved, and then he could have his primary home on that property without us ever involved. Is that correct?
That could be an evidence.
Irritatively.
Yes, if it was brought to code off property.
Yeah.
Because it's no longer a shed.
But the shed would have to be brought in.
Yeah, it would have to be up to code. So, or if this was approved, do we have the option to give a timeline on how fast this process can be done, so it doesn't have to be, so the neighbors don't have to look at a shed for the next two years on their property, or next door on their property or whatever?
So the staff did recommend not only the approval, but the following conditions, one being that the applicant is required to obtain all applicable building permits, including grading, drainage, driveway, forestry, within six months from the planning commission's approval, and construction must be completed with one year. So that would ensure that it's met in a timely manner, everything has been converted to where it's no longer outstanding, and the full property brought into compliance within that one year's timeframe. Anything that would fall outside of that, the applicant would either have to come back formally and ask for an extension, or the property would have to be returned back to its original state.
An original state, just being that that shed is removed?
Correct.
Not the grading, that doesn't impact it, or the prep work for the site?
I'd have to bring that section of the code up a little bit more.
I got one more question.
Yes, sir.
As Frederick stated, are we setting precedence with this case if we were to approve it? I mean, what's stopped the next guy from going, oh, well, you did it for the last guy, and, you know, move a shed in, we're going to convert it?
Yeah, I mean, if shed's all over town.
Unfortunately, this process has been afforded to other opportunities. They've come in front of, not you as sitting members, but in history, asking for the approval to have a shed placed because they were going to build a home. However, the homes are never built, and if you take a lovely stroll through town, you can find about six of them that just are randomly located wherever.
When was the last one?
It has been quite a while, because it, since the, the last ones were done, the planning commission wasn't granting them any further.
Right, so I think we've.
I'm going to say it's going to be at least 20 years since the last one was actually approved. But none of them had the exact same intent of the conversion as the applicant's intent today.
No, but as you just admitted, it was, the intent was to build a primary dwelling on the property, and then that never occurred, and then there's still sheds there. So in theory, that this could result in the same problem, even though it's the same building, even though he's trying to update and convert this. Okay. Questions for the applicant, guys?
Yeah.
I have a question. So Stephanie says that the building is not going to be exactly where it is today. What's going to be your process to get this building moved out of the way? Is there, is this pad big enough to move completely out of the way, to pour the slab for it to sit on?
Yeah, we don't believe there'd be any problem with that.
Miss, there's other questions for the applicant?
No, I'd just make the point that if they're now aware of this process, having this, this particular property came before us before, the obvious, simple solution was take the shed off, convert it, pour your slab, and bring it back, and we're not here today.
Yeah.
I mean, that's the obvious thing. They said, oh, well, you now know the regulations. That was immediately available to anybody who could look it up.
See, because you brought up a great point. We're getting maybe a few too many people that want to ask for forgiveness instead of permission. And it makes it tough on all of us. We hate to be the bad guy, but at the same time, we have to withhold the laws of the city, okay? So we try to find a balancing point in that. Now, what maybe should have been done is, when he applied for the permit, tell us what is going to go on to the property, or present a plan for the property. But he didn't. He merely put it on there. So, I mean, maybe the solution is pulling it off, putting it somewhere, get the lot ready, and then move it back on when everything is compliant. I don't want to put out to neighbors either, you know? I mean, this is what I'm afraid of, if people say, well, look, he did it, then we'll just do it. And that's what we don't want to do here.
If you don't mind, I wasn't with Mr. Adler when he
I wasn't with Mr. Adler when he made his initial application, nor was I with him when he, when he applied with you. Well, not as an excuse. I'm just saying that his familiarity increased exponentially when he and I first met and we talked about the land use ordinance and we talked about how we got to this point. And I, I don't know if you want to hear from Mr. Adler, but my understanding was that he was in communication with the village and that there may have been some miscommunication between members of the village and him that resulted in this issue. But however we got to where we are, my involvement, I would hope, could give you some assurance that it's going to be expeditious, speedy, fruitful, productive and compliant. So i- if I can't give you that assurance, then, then, then I would understand, of course, that you would be naturally hesitant to proceed with this application. But I would urge you to consider as well that, that if we do proceed, it's not going to take us six months. And I don't know, Mr. Adler, I don't know if you're entitled or enabled to speak up, but I think we can get this done very quickly. I don't see why we couldn't get it done in 60 days rather than six months.
Thank you, Mr. Griffin. Mr. Adler, what would you like to add?
I'd like to add that we can get this done. We wanted to get this done before. The little structure on there is actually built out. It has a separate bathroom, separate kitchen, bedroom. It's finished on the inside, but there's some codes, I guess Stephanie says we have to update and we're more than willing to do that. We have no issues with that. We want to follow all the rules per the village and bring everything into compliance.
Mr. Adler, a question for you. That little bathroom and what you describe as it being built out, was that built out when you brought the structure on to the property?
Prior to us bringing it, yes, sir.
Okay. So then it's never really been intended as an accessory dwelling unit or an accessory unit? It was intended to be a permanent structure, in my opinion, and it just didn't follow the permanent process?
So they're going to have to move the structure either way to build the forest lab. Move the structure, do what's required, bring it back in.
Yeah.
Either way, it has to be moved. It can't stay there. We've established that. So in the story, move it, get it compliant, bring it back. It's going to have to be moved one way or another.
It is compliant. I just need to put the foundation.
Well, okay, that's what I'm saying. It needs to be moved to get the foundation put in.
Yeah, we have no problem moving it to the side, putting our foundation and then setting it back on top for the code. That's what the whole procedure is. I mean, I have water meter there that's been set up since last year that I'm paying on, water, trash and sewer. It's not hooked up. I pay a monthly bill on that. I'm paying the forestry every three months. I'm paying, I paid a forestry to come cut some trees down. I paid the excavation for the grading already. And then we run into this bump right here. We have, we plan on following all the rules. We're not going to bend backwards and try to cheat anybody. We want everybody to be happy, including the neighbors. We're trying to make the place look a little bit better in the area.
I appreciate that. I too own vacant lots that I pay upon. And so I'm not sure how that's relevant for what we're here today, which is a conditional use for an accessory structure, which by your own admission, this is not an accessory structure. And therefore, I don't think my two cents, and then we can, if there's a motion, we can vote on motion, we don't grant a conditional use for something that's not an accessory structure. And for him to come up to compliance, he needs to do what he needs to do for an R1, regardless of the size, if it's a 20,000 square foot home, you got to follow the permitting process, or if it's a 300 square foot home, you got to follow the permitting process. I don't know how it's not a manufactured home if it's built off site and then brought into an R1. That's something that maybe we need to look at beyond this. With it, I mean, maybe the building code is very clear on that. It just doesn't make sense to me in that regard. But this is not an accessory dwelling unit by Mr. Adler's admission, in my opinion. So I would entertain a motion from the committee if there is one.
Chairman Riggs, real quick, just to bring clarification on why it's being addressed as an accessory structure, is the stamped engineered plans submitted by the applicant to the building department clearly stated this is not to be used as a dwelling unit? It is a accessory structure. So that's why we're having to go forward through this process to get him the approvals to bring it up.
Yeah. I appreciate that, Stephanie.
May I add one thing?
Yes, sir.
If it's the inclination of the commission to sanction the Adlers and it sounds like you may be considering a form of sanction that would require the building to be moved and then brought back because of its compliance, there's a cost associated, of course. And I think I would just offer that perhaps a sanction then of the Adlers where they don't have to move the building, but we pay that sanction cost because we're, we're so close to being in compliance, then it would just be a matter of rote for us to remove the building and bring it back.
I appreciate that, Mr. Griffin. And if I had the ability to negotiate on behalf of the village or anybody else, maybe I would, but all we can do is, are we going to grant this conditional use or not as a commission? So our scope is very limited and we base it off of information presented and whether or not we think it adheres to the options for conditional use.
Understood.
So. We're just volunteers up here. So if I, you can stay there, there might be other questions, but I think somebody was going to do a motion.
Yeah. Go ahead, Bill.
Put my readers on.
Go for it.
Based on the foregoing findings of facts per 54-68, 54-137 and 54-92 of the village code, I move to grant the requested conditional use approval for case number CU-2025-12 with the conditions stated in the case report.
Got a motion?
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any other discussion or comments? Seeing none, we'll move to a roll call vote.
Commissioner Byers?
Nay.
Commissioner Hall?
No.
Commissioner McLean?
Nay.
Commissioner Richardson?
No.
Commissioner Riggsby?
No.
Motion does not carry.
Thank you, Mr. Adler. Thank you, Mr. Griffin. I'm sure Stephanie will be in, in contact to address this issue. For the record, the reason why I voted no on the item is there was no intent for this to be an accessory dwelling unit. We didn't want to set the standard of allowing for accessory units on a property. In other words, just random sheds on properties. And it's been 20 years by the staff's admission since the last one was granted and we don't want to start that precedent now. The other thing I'll add is it seems like there's other ways to address to get you up to compliance. So those are the reasons why. Any others? Thank you, sir. Any others from the commission that you would add on to that?
No, you hit the nail on the head.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Adler. Thank you, Mr. Griffin. Let's move on to the next item, which is B, Site Plan 2025-17. I believe Alex, you're going to be telling us about this one?
Yes, sir. This is a request for a site plan approval. The reason why the commission is being asked for review of this item is under Section 54139, retaining walls that are proposed to be located in a, in a setback area that exceed, I'll call right offhand, the height.
Four feet, I believe.
Four feet, thank you. Four feet in above grade need to be approved via the site plan approval by the commission. So a somewhat unusual request, but the site plan approval process is something that the commission is familiar with. So that is the, the nature of this request. The applicant is here this, this afternoon to address any questions that you may have on, on this item as well.
Great. Thank you, Alex. Applicant, come on down. You'll raise your right hand, say you'll tell the truth, nothing but the truth.
Brian Newell, I swear to tell the truth.
Thank you, Mr. Newell. Tell us a little bit about what you're requesting to do.
So I'm a contractor and I am putting in a foundation and some other work that also requires a retaining wall for a customer. And the lot sits quite a bit above street level. And so in order to, to get the house set, a parking area and make it all stable and, you know, a, a big enough parking area, we'd like to bring, bring a retaining wall up at the property line to eight to 10 feet. And that would give them two car widths worth of parking in front of the house. It's, it's a mobile home and so the house is set and so we're just waiting to be able to do this wall so we can make a parking area and, you know, kind of finish it all up.
Great, thank you. I appreciate that overview. At this time, we'll open it up to public comment if there is any from folks here in the audience. If not, we'll keep you here and I'm sure the commission has some questions. So at this time, would anybody like to comment on this item? All right, seeing none, I'm going to go ahead and close public comment and then I'll ask Alex, was there any communication on this item?
Yes, so we did send out 24 letters. We received no comments back from, from those letters that were sent out. We also did a technical review with village departments. We received something back from the street department expressing concerns about clearance of that wall when clearing out the ditches, the bar ditches along the side. And so the recommendation that we would have is that that wall would be at least five feet from the right of way line or the front property line.
Okay, thank you for that additional context. All right, at this time, I'll open it up for the commission for questions for Mr. Newell.
I guess the, the only question I got with one of the conditions they're recommending, I know the site plan shows the wall being on the property line and as I understand, it looks like it's from the photos laid out that way. They're recommending going five feet back. Is that going to create an issue for their parking places or, I mean, that's, that's a pretty steep area and you cut five more feet back. I mean.
Exactly. So y- yes, that, that is going to be a problem. So if, I think in your, in your packet, there's a picture of the bank there.
Yeah, that's why I asked the question.
And so in that, that bank is actually where the ditch runs now. The property line is 10 foot, is almost 10 foot behind that, that bank now. So if we go another five foot, you're 15 foot off of the ditch, the current ditch line, which makes absolutely zero sense. You know, there's, there's no reason for it. And when, when, when we put the wall on the property line, you will actually, there will actually be parking down between the pavement and this wall. So, you know, there, there's going to be plenty of ditch there. There's, there's really no reason to go further back.
Well, I mean.
And to be hon, to be quite honest, if we're going to do that, I can put a four foot wall at the property line and move it back four foot and still have an, an extra foot. So if that's the case, we're just wasting time here because that doesn't, that doesn't solve anything. You know, what we're wanting is on the property line in the front.
Well, Corey, it says here, applicant agrees to have the wall no less than five feet from the property line. That's in our packet here. So they've already agreed to that.
Within the conditions? No, that's, that's the conditions we.
Recommended.
If we, yeah, if we approved it, that's what we would recommend. But we can alter and edit any of the conditions within the case report.
Yeah, that, that wasn't the applicant that recommended that.
So just a little clarification from you. That cut bank there, where you've already cut down some, that's the property line?
No.
Where the blockers stacked on the pallet?
Property line is, is approximately 10 foot behind.
Behind the cut bank?
Behind the cutback, yeah. That is the current ditch line there. If we go back to the property line, we are moving the ditch another 10 foot back off of the street.
So technically, this isn't being built on the property. It's on the village property. Is that what I'm hearing?
No.
Yeah, I don't.
That's what I'm trying to.
When you're saying behind the.
So where the, where the blockers stacked on the pallet?
Yes.
That's village right of way.
That's village right of way. So the cut bank from there would be, you said 10 foot back from that cut bank?
The property line is, is.
So more or less in the picture where your, where your grade is up there that's.
Do you guys see this picture?
Mm-hmm.
So. The, you can see, right here is juniper. And then you can see the contours. The contours are clear out here where it runs into the, where the current ditch is now, way out here, almost at the, at the number 50 right there. That's where the ditch is now. The property line is clear back here at the red line.
Where you're proposing the wall?
Where I'm proposing the wall, yes. Do you want to see this?
That would be helpful if you don't mind ringing that up. Because we didn't, our version's a little bit different than that.
We got a really small version.
I think you had the question. Start with him.
Sure.
So this is the current ditch line clear out here. You can see the end of the contours right here.
And that's where the block is, the pallet?
That's where the block is right now.
Okay.
The property line is clear back here. If you see in your picture, the top of this dirt, that's, that's where it starts to level out up here. So the property line is, whoops, I'm sorry.
You're fine.
The property line is clear out here under, I mean, I'm sorry, the property line's up here, but the current ditch is way out there.
I think he's.
That's what I thought, yeah.
The, the, this very top is, you're saying, the property line? So there's the two levels of cut, there's where the pallet of block is, then there's another cut.
Okay, no, we've, we've already dug this back a little bit.
Okay.
The property, the current property line runs about where this colored, the color change is in that dirt.
Okay.
And that's where you're wanting to start the wall?
Yeah, but you can see in this picture, the, I have to turn the background, sorry. The pavement is clear out here. This is the edge of pavement here.
Yeah.
So.
So the edge, this is the pavement?
Yeah.
And this is where you want to build the rest?
Yes.
So you're 10 foot off edge of pavement, do you think?
Yes, yeah. So to go another five foot back, I don't even understand.
Alex, do you know?
Now, I, I understand that.
Do you know the difference between the edge of the pavement and where the right of way for the village ends? We don't have that information specifically, just what the street department provided us.
The designated right of way is 50 feet. That is about two car length of pavement that is put down, so roughly about 22 foot of pavement. So the additional 50 feet would be split up on either side of that.
So you basically, yeah, the right of way is basically 12 and a half feet off, 12 and a half feet off the edge of either side of the pavement is the right of way.
So he's close to that?
Yeah.
From his.
Now, it's my understanding that a wall over four foot has to be engineered, is that right?
Yes.
And these are certified engineered system that these block, right?
Yes, if, these are, these are stackable blocks and it has been engineered, it should be in your packet, the engineering design should be in there.
No, it wasn't.
Oh, well.
Does it sit on the ground or does it sit on a poured footing?
No, it's set, so what you do is you, you, originally, you dig down an extra foot and lay gravel down, you level them and set them in the gravel. And then these blocks are shaped kind of like an H shape where they have somewhat of a flat back and then a, two U shapes out of the end of it. And they have knobs on the bottom of it so that they kind of lock behind the front one. And then when you, then you have to backfill and fill in the block and it makes like a cylinder of gravel all the way up through these. So they are, they are retaining wall.
So you have to backfill as you, as you build?
Yes, yeah.
So that you.
And it also requires a mesh down. The engineering plan shows that you have to. I don't know if I printed that off, if I have it in this or not. Anyway, the engineer plan shows that you take this mesh and he's got it laid out so at certain block levels, you lay mesh out and then you backfill and compact over that, which keeps, you know, it's like a dead man in your, in your wall. It keeps your wall from pushing out.
Right.
So.
Question for staff?
It's very structural. And you can also, if you looked at the Dollar General out here on Meacham, that Dollar General is built way up. That's exactly how that wall was built, the same.
Well, and I know the one behind River Crossing is basically the same thing and it blew out.
Oh, I don't know that one, but I'm not.
But that was way high, it was over ten feet.
Yeah, I know, I'm, got the same thing going on with the house, but that was an engineered wall that had to have a poured footing under it.
Right.
So would this, would this wall be under the watchful eye of our inspectors?
It requires a building permit.
Right, okay.
And so I think, my two cents, I think the question is whether or not we need to, based off the staff's recommendation, if we wanna go forward with this, if we need to add the additional five or not, based off of the photo and where they, he's proposing.
Yeah, and if he goes five back, he only has to, he says he only said four-foot wall, which doesn't require all that, so.
Right, and then we're, yeah, exactly.
I don't see the advantage, I mean, there's quite a ways off of the. Yeah, I think the only thing you might wanna do is would they consider putting in a poured footing just because of the drainage and you don't want it to, if it's sitting on gravel and you get, there does, a lot of water does come down that hill.
Yeah.
You know, whether poured footing would help alleviate the structural concerns of it getting washed away and it's sweaty, dry. I mean, I think that would be the only thing that I would, I would look at. I've seen a lot of water down that hill.
Yeah.
You were talking about the mesh. How does that actually work in preventing it from going forward?
So what it does is you have to put the mesh, the engineer has links of mesh that it rolls. So let's say you have a row of block like this. You, you have gravel backfilling and then you compact dirt back behind that. And then you put this mesh, per specs of the engineer, you lay it on the, on the top, on the top of this block row and then back into the dirt and in into that gravel.
Okay.
And then you stack the next row of block and then you compact your gravel and dirt on top of that. So the mesh is back in the dirt ways. And as you get up higher, I believe like the, the top of the wall requires ten foot of mesh back into the, into the dirt bank in order to hold the top of it. And so lower you are, I, I believe it's six feet or something is what it requires for a little bit lower. But as you, as you get higher, you have to have it further into the dirt. And that compact dirt holds.
I was just wondering how it actually attached to the wall, so it provided strength from.
Those blocks that have the locking, you know, the locking, they, they have the locking system on them.
Yeah.
And it pushes that mesh, it sits on that mesh in the wall and in the locking system.
Okay, thank you. Commissioners, any other questions for the applicant or staff?
Staff question, I mean, would it, would it make sense for the applicant, since he's proposing to put it on the property line, have the property pins on that front staked so that they can make sure the wall is on the property line? Could that be a condition?
They are staked.
They are staked.
Yes, sir, that would be a concern that we would have and we would make sure, we would be sure that, yes, that it's not constructed in the city right-of-way.
Okay, good, cuz, yeah, cuz the right-of-way is, is what it is. I don't have a problem with it on the line, as long as you know where the line is. We don't wanna get into where, oh, well, I built it five feet into the right-of-way.
Yeah.
So.
And if you've, you said you've driven up and down that street. If you've driven anywhere in Ponderosa Heights, you know that there's retaining walls all up against even the pavement up through there.
Yeah, we can't correct past people's problems.
We aren't litigated for the sins of our fathers or forefathers, you know what I mean?
We'd like to.
Okay. Was there, I I'd entertain a motion if the commission doesn't have any other questions for the applicant.
Aye.
Okay.
Based upon the foregoing findings of fact for fifty-four dash nine seven, fifty-four dash one three nine, and fifty-four dash six seven of the village code, I move to grant the requested site plan and concept approval for case number SP twenty twenty-five dash seventeen with the condition stated in the case report, except for condition one. Except for condition one.
Second.
Motion by group here, all right. We have a motion and a second.
Who's the second?
I was.
Any question or any other comments? Just to clarify, the motion was to strike the first condition in the case report.
Which is the five foot.
Which is the five foot.
Let's move to roll call vote.
Commissioner Byers?
Aye.
Commissioner Hall?
Aye.
Commissioner McAlina?
Aye.
Commissioner Richardson?
Aye.
Commissioner Rigsby?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you, sir, appreciate it.
Thanks.
Stephanie will have something for you to sign, or do you need to get an updated one?
I'll have to modify it.
Okay, thanks, Alex, appreciate it.
See you in a day or two then.
I can email it to you, depending on how long this is, it'll probably be tomorrow morning.
All right, let's move on to the next one. We are skipping C and moving straight on to D, variance PV twenty twenty-five dash nineteen. I believe this is you, right, Stephanie, that are gonna comment on this one?
Yes, that one is me. So today we have Mr. Enzer on behalf of the Gateway Church requesting a variance to encroach three point seven one feet into the ten-foot rear yard setback to construct a thirty-foot by sixteen-foot covered deck within the R-one single-family district located at two oh nine Swallow Drive. Mr. Enzer is here and ready for questions.
Great, do you mind raising your right hand, stating your name, say you'll tell the truth, nothing but the truth?
I am J. Center, I will tell the truth, nothing but the truth.
Great, thank you, Mr. Enzer. Tell us a little bit about what you're trying to do.
I'll give you a very, very quick background. Gateway Church was in need of a youth director. And with housing costs and rental costs, we raised the money to, to put this house there. And the, the lot is real wide and real skinny. So we've done the best we could with what we have. We're, I'm wanting a deck large enough for the youth director to have meetings, or have gatherings on that back deck. That's my personal desire.
Thank you, and that's, that's the reason for the variance is to have the deck go into the setback on the.
In the rear, yeah, on the rear.
All right, thank you. Any comments on this one from the?
Okay.
Staff, Stephanie, did we send out letters?
Yes, I did send out twenty-one letters. One letter was returned, zero responses were received.
Okay, thank you. And then I'll go ahead and close public hearing. And Stephanie, you wanna give us staff's perspective?
So staff finds that the applicant owns lots eighteen and nineteen and intends to develop each lot separately. Upon the review, the application has been determined that the property of lot nineteen does not meet the minimum lot width requirements of the municipal code as it is, reaching the hundred-foot depth requirement. The applicant is requesting an additional encroachment of three point seven one feet into the decreased setback for the covered deck as the ten-foot allotment is already allowed under section fifty-four one forty. Staff finds that the topography is significant compared to the adjacent commercial properties and there are no anticipation of adverse impacts to the surrounding area if approved. But at this time, staff reserves a recommendation of approval as it is, we are unable to determine a hardship that would prevent them from decreasing the size to meet the ten-foot allotment.
Thank you. All right, commissioners, what questions do you have for Mr. Enzer and the applicant?
What would? I think Ms. Warren just told you there's no obvious reason why you can't make the deck a little smaller. I mean, you can make it wider, get your square footage the same, but.
Yeah, you know, my goal is that a youth group can go out there and make tables and sit around it.
Right.
And so that's my vision of this thing. And, yeah, it would have to be, what, twelve?
Yeah, you're three point seven one, so you'd be twelve foot three.
Twelve foot?
You could have a twelve-foot deck.
Yeah, would be within the setback. Question for staff, so you mentioned that the lot is not a hundred-foot depth. Is that accurate?
According to the proposed measurements that I got, it was shy at coming in at ninety-nine.
Gotcha.
According to the survey, I'm not really sure what R and F stands for on this, but this fluctuates anywhere between eighty-four and a half to eighty-four point two. So there's a little bit of number discrepancy. Either way, all three are identified to be under the hundred feet.
So is that considered the hardship in this case? The fact that it is in irregular shape?
It is in irregular shape, but there, staff wasn't able to determine an actual hardship on what would prevent them from meeting the setbacks. There's alternative ways of meeting the, the structure. Because it's already decreased from twenty feet to ten to allow for that type of structure.
And they're, to clarify, they're wanting it into that ten-foot setback, an additional basically three feet, three point seven feet into the setback, if I understand the application?
Yes.
Okay. But the setback's already been reduced to ten feet, okay?
Takes it to six point two nine at that point.
Yeah, yeah.
And it looks like the home is set back additionally off of the twenty-foot requirement. So if the home would have been positioned further up, they could have met that.
Yeah, so has it been set finally already?
The home was occupying the lot, that, that was permitted through a different process. And the home meets the setbacks, it's simply just the deck that we're addressing today.
And it's, is it permanently in place?
Yes, yes, it is.
The house?
Yeah, it's anchored down. All permitted, legal, anchored down. And, and that front is real steep down there. So that moving the house closer to the road would have been problematic and getting drainage and things like that.
Okay. Other questions? Is there a motion or?
I just think we've already decreased the setbacks to accommodate for, so that we wouldn't see so much of this, and here we are again.
There's an obvious solution, is make the deck narrower. I mean, that's.
Longer.
Yeah, if we had the old setbacks, you wouldn't have it there anyway, so. I mean, there's not, there's not a hardship, I mean, it's not a hardship to make the deck.
I did.
Three feet narrower, four feet narrower.
Lupe Gallegos is the owner of the property behind there, Chef Lupe, if you knew him. And he had no objections to it. And he actually granted some easement in that area for the septic system. So we have a septic easement in the area that, we didn't need to occupy the land, but we needed the square feet in there. So it's, if, if we get a denial today, I would go ask him for an easement and then come back. Because I really want the deck to be sixteen feet.
Easement.
Not sure. So, yeah, the east, it would, it would need to be, it would need to be an actual fee simple and a replat. It would need to be a fee simple acquisition of additional property.
And replat.
And replat.
Okay, that's, that's a monster process.
All right, any other questions for the applicant? Any other comments from the commissioners?
One comment, and I don't know if this is applicable or not, but are you changing the, having a gathering of youth, is it, does it change the use of that property as far as, you know?
No, that, that would be considered a private gathering at a residential home. You can continue to have your parties, Bart.
Yeah. This weekend, Saturday, six o'clock? Come on, Bart. You cooking the steak?
All right, all right, folks, I would entertain if, or there's more, another comment on?
One comment.
Yep.
I mean, the pictures I'm looking at, the modular has not been put together. Is that, am I on the right pictures?
It might have been updated since then.
That's happened since then.
Okay, so maybe that would have been the time again.
No, 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 the concrete was already poured, so there was no moving it.
Okay, so had this been in the original plans, you could have moved your concrete accordingly, correct?
The, well, to get the front and the drainage right, it would have been, because of that, it's a, it's a real steep incline there to get down to the house. So I don't know if there's a photo showing how steep that is.
Mr. Chairman, based upon the foregoing findings of fact fifty-four dash one ninety-two, or fifty-four dash ninety-two, fifty-four dash sixty-six, and fifty-four dash one forty of the village code, I move to grant the requested variance for case PV two zero two five dash one nine with a condition stated in the case report.
Got a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Got a motion and a second? Any discussion or final comments? All right, we'll move to a roll call vote.
Commissioner Byers?
Nay.
Commissioner Hall?
Nay.
Commissioner McAlina?
Nay.
Commissioner Richardson?
Nay.
Commissioner Rigsby?
Nay.
Motion does not carry.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Enzer, I appreciate it. For the record, for Stephanie and everyone else, I think it was because there's not a clear hardship being found. You can reduce the size of the deck from sixteen to twelve. For a hardship, it has to be something that you can't get around, not just a design hardship, if you will. So that's the primary thing.
Thank you, commission, and, and I need to say, state that y'all have a rock star with Stephanie here.
Preaching to the choir on that one.
Oh, gosh, okay.
I was, that was my statement before I realized all the things she had to do with this, so.
Byers, wait.
Thank you, sir, I appreciate it. All right, let's move on to the, the next one. Conditional use CU twenty twenty-five dash twenty-one, letter E. I believe this is you, Alex, or is this you, Stephanie?
This is me again. So today we have a two-part hearing for the address at seven twelve Meacham. So it's not a typo, but we do have two conditional uses for you guys to hear separately. Both are the same applicants, the development is to go together. The very first one we're gonna be talking about today is a conditional use approval to allow for light manufacturing specifically of a tortilla factory within the C-two district located at seven twelve Meacham Drive. The applicants are present and available for questions.
Excellent. Come on down, whoever wants to be the, the person doing the speaking. We'll have you raise your right hand, state your name, say you'll tell the truth, nothing but the truth.
I'm Lawrence Manaco, I swear to tell the truth.
Thank you, Mr. Manaco, was it?
Manaco, yes.
Manaco, okay, Mr. Manaco, thank you. Tell us a little bit specifically about the front part, I believe, of the building, and then we'll talk about the second part.
Okay.
For the next one, so.
So my partners and I, we moved into Riedosa and opened up a grill on Sudarth in the new Hatch Chili World location. We've got the grill, we're gonna be opening up there. We've gone through all the permits and everything. And as part of that, we wanted to make our own tortillas. We're all from Texas. My partner, Chris, back there, he, him and his family for forty years have had a Mexican restaurant in, in Plano, Texas, called Aparicio's Plano Tortilla Factory, if anybody knows from Plano. So as we're opening this grill, we're gonna have fresh food. And part of that is homemade tortillas versus store-bought and buying them in. We looked at various different places to be able to put the tortilla, tortilla machine. We call it a factory, but it is a standalone machine. And we decided when this building. And we decided, uh, when this building on Meacham Drive came available, that hey, this may be a good place to initially put a tortilla machine. And then eventually, and as it shows in this, um, conditional use case, grow it out to a full kitchen to where we have a second location for making food and selling in a retail area. So the front half of the building, uh, initially would be, one of the rooms would be cleaned out. Uh, we would put a firewall along, separating the front and the back half of the building. We'd bring up the one room to be code, to be able to have the tortilla machine. We'd also upgrade the bathroom to be ADA compliant, um, just because we know down the road we'd have to do it. Might as well do it all at one time, because we'll need a bathroom. And everything else would be left empty. Um, it won't be open for retail. It'll be just used initially for roughly, uh, a year or so to make tortillas, to be used, uh, at our facility on Sudarth, as well as other retail locations.
Great. Thanks, Mr. Monaco. I appreciate that. Um, at this time, we'll open it up for public comment. Uh, and then we'll see if anybody has anything to say. If not, we'll close public comment, hear from staff, and then there might be some questions from the commission. So, uh, public comment, come on down. Um, if you don't mind just taking a seat in the front row while we hear further in the public comment, you'll have the right for a rebuttal. And then we'll go from there.
I'm Richard Leveron, and I swear to tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Mr. Leveron, how are you?
Good, thank you.
Good.
Um, I've just got one question, uh, about the basic, the conditional use for the tortilla. Once that's granted, it runs with the land, right? From owner to owner?
The granted of the use of light manufacturing, um, would be granted to this property for the making of tortillas.
So could it be, if somebody wanted to do an, another kind of light manufacturing, are they grandfathered in, or do they have to reapply?
Uh, whatever that intention would have to be discussed with staff, so we can verify if it meets the same requirements on what this approval is, or if they have to reapply for a different license.
Did I answer your question?
That's all I, yeah, that's all I got.
Sounds like the worst response. It depends. It depends was the response, so. The worst response.
I'd probably be one of the best customers, so.
All right. Any other comments? I think there was somebody on the chat.
Um, we do have a written comment, um, but I believe the applicant is, or the commenter is online. So rather than introducing her written comment to the record, we can allow her to, uh, make her statement.
Yes, hello. Hi, everyone. I hope you can hear me. Um, are you able to hear me?
We are. Do you mind stating your name and say you'll tell the truth, nothing but the truth?
Yes, my name is Alexandra Zestus Gerson. I swear to, I swear to tell the truth, but nothing but the truth.
Thank you.
Um, I am the property, my property, three fifty-three Country Club Drive is directly behind, uh, seven twelve Meacham Drive. Um, our main concern is, um, the odor from the tortilla factory. Um, this, our home is our sanctuary. It's where we find solace and peace, um, and everything, um, there in our home. We're, we're concerned, um, from the odors that, especially since this, um, seven twelve Meacham Drive is directly behind our property. Uh, we're concerned on, um, the odors associated with the factory of the tortilla. Um, and this would go ahead and, um, disrupt our peaceful environment that we've cherished for years. Um, the other thing is, you know, um, a potential increase in noise and traffic. Um, I do understand it's a commercial, um, building, but at the same time, like, it was, I believe, property management for several years, and there's never been an issue. In addition, that there is no, um, fence in the backyard. So seven twelve Meacham and three fifty-three Country Club, it's, um, you know, it's, it's open. The, there's no fence or anything. Um, so this would increase the likelihood of disturbances, um, and everything. Um, and that's our, our main concern here in going to go ahead and, um, approving this tortilla factory, which from my understanding, understanding, correct me if I'm, I'm wrong, it will then, um, it, it's just like the first step. Later on, it's going to grow into, um, a full kitchen and restaurant. And, um, these would, our, our initial concerns would just go ahead and increase, um, starting with this approval.
Great. Thank you for your comment. We'll now allow the applicant. Uh, would you be okay if, Mr. Leveron has another question or comment? Mr. Mon, would you be okay if he came back? Usually we say one and done, but if you're okay.
I've just got one other question, uh, to Alexandria. Is, is, is there any, are there any particulates in the air of wheat, flour? I, I don't think it's that massive of a machine, so I'm, I'm not real concerned about it. But she was talking about the odors, or there any particulates that are going to be in the air and whatnot.
Okay. Mr. Leveron? I think there's a couple of questions, and now would be the time to address those concerns for those folks.
I understand. Um, I, I understand their questions and concerns. The, this is a light manufacturing, and it's a standalone machine. Uh, it does vent out, outside, uh, based on the discussions we've been having with the village. There's not a need for a vent hood as, as a true kitchen, but there will be when we expand. Their odor is basically like br, smell of bread. It's baking bread. It's baking cookies. It's baking food. Or there's grills to where we're going to grill, eventually grill, you know, food. There's not going to be any production odor or anything like that. As far as particulates in the air, not, nothing abnormal. I mean, it's enclosed in a room. It'll be in a separate room, um, with proper ventilation per the permits of the village. Um, as far as the noise, uh, this, we are not planning, are not asking, and will not ask for a restaurant. That's the one thing that, uh, talking to my partners, for forty years, they had a restaurant. They sold it. And what they do like is to-go food. It's all about to-go. People come in, get something, take it home. So that's the type of retail we're, we're looking at.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Uh, seeing no other comments, I'll close public hearing. Um, and then Stephanie, will you give us what, uh, the staff's assessment is? And I think we heard from the written feedback in person as well.
Yes. Uh, so other than, uh, the comments made today, fifteen letters were mailed, uh, zero were returned. Um, for staff analysis and recommendation, upon review of the application, the staff finds that the request for the light manufacturing of tortillas would not adversely impact the health, safety, or general welfare of the occupants of surrounding properties. The staff has discussed parking requirements with the applicant, and it has been determined that parking will be met for both phases of the build and additional uses. The proposed request has been thoroughly reviewed and found to be fully consistent with the village and municipal, uh, village code and, uh, conformance with the master plan, and staff does, uh, recommend approval of the request.
Great, thank you. Um, all right, at this time, I'll open it up for the commissioners for questions.
The Lowe's grocery store has a tortilla machine. Is that basically what we're looking at?
Right. Something very similar. We, we've got an example over here, if you'd like to see it.
You brought samples of tortillas?
We would love to see that.
We're waiting for the approval to get the tortillas out.
A little bribery, never hurt anyone.
No, but it's, uh, basically, fully laid out, it's eighty-nine inches by a, uh, sixty-one inches.
Very low impact.
Yeah, it's, yeah.
But, yeah. I guess the question I would have is just for the access to this facility, is it all off Meacham Road? Since you've got a neighbor right behind you, there's going to be like no through access through there? It's all going to be off Meacham Road?
We're, we're not changing anything as far as the site plan and the access to it.
Okay, so it's all off Meacham Road? Okay.
Yes.
Uh, and this would be governed under the Department of Food Services, or is it manufacturing? The state would take care of, like, making sure that it's all compliant enough to?
Yeah, the village will, uh, require a grease trap, um, within the sink, because it'll be required to have three compartment sink just for general, uh, dishwashing. Um, there wouldn't necessarily at this phase be a requirement for them to have an outdoor, uh, grease trap, because they're not using the bulk containers of grease and needing disposal of that nature. And then, um, any of the food preparations and all of that does get certified by the NMEB.
New Mexico Department of?
Environmental Department, yes. Specifically the health office.
Thank you.
You're very welcome.
Oh, acronyms, you know, too many. Um, okay. Other questions for the applicant? Clarifications?
Hello? Um, I just have, um, one last.
I'm sorry, ma'am, the public hearing, uh, the public input has been closed at this point. I do apologize. Yeah, I'm sorry. Uh, what other questions from the commission for the applicants? And there, so the state will go through the process of determining whether or not you need a vent hood, whether or not you need, um, filters, all that good stuff.
Correct.
But largely, it'll be self-contained within one room within that building.
That, the tortilla machine, yes.
And the noise factor is negligible?
It's negligible, yes. And, and all the, I'll call it, surrounding walls will be brought up to proper fire, uh, department standards.
Back to me, reading skills.
Reading skills.
Based upon the foregoing findings of facts per fifty-four dash sixty-eight, fifty-four dash one forty-one, and fifty-four dash one hundred of the village code, I move to grant the requested conditional use approval for case number CU dash two oh two five dash two one, with the condition stated in the case report.
Second.
I got a motion by Bill and a second by Ron. Any discussions? We'll go to roll call vote.
Commissioner Byers?
Aye.
Commissioner Hall?
Aye.
Commissioner McLeanah?
Aye.
Commissioner Richardson?
Aye.
Commissioner Rigsby?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Great, uh.
Use, Lord.
We'll move to the next one, just as soon as Stephanie gets back. I think it's the same applicant, the same location, uh, but for the back half of that property.
Uh, that is correct. So, um, this particular part of the request is a conditional use, um, to develop a single-family dwelling. Um, and not necessarily to develop, um, to utilize an existing structure which inhabits a single-family dwelling, uh, to be used, uh, primarily and solely for long-term rentals only. Um, the applicants are looking to utilize this section of their, uh, property, bring it up into the building codes as it'll be, become basically a mixed use. Um, it was determined that the full structure was built as a single-family residence back in, like, nineteen seventy-two-ish? Yes, nineteen seventy-two. Um, it has been converted, the majority of the structure, into, um, the retail where the previous owners were Don Harmon. He did Four Seasons Real Estate. He had the front offices for his real estate business. He did, utilized the home in the back. After that business closed, it moved into, uh, Simon Gomez's jewelry store. They utilize only the, uh, commercial activities. Nobody has inhabited the, um, use of the dwelling. So since that stopped, um, for a period of ninety days, uh, the applicants unable to just go back in and start using it without asking for the appropriate approvals through the commission.
Thank you for that information. Anything else to add? What else would you like to add on the application?
Uh, nothing other than one of the reasons we looked at this building is the fact that we had dual use available.
Thank you. And it is your intention to be long-term?
Yes.
Okay.
Is the access?
Wow, we gotta open it up public. We're not in question yet. I, I broke the rules. I'm sorry. That's my fault for, um, I messed up. Uh, we'll open it up for public comment unless there's anything else to add from the applicants. Public comment?
Uh, yes, hello?
Yep.
Yes, um, I didn't quite understand, um, the second part of the request, but now that, um, it was explained. Um, so the back part would be used, like, renting it out, um, to a family, correct? So my concern is, since, as, as I had mentioned in the first request, there is no, um, no fence separating the property nor anything. Um, what, how is the, what, where is the access going to be, um, for the back part on this long-term rental? Um, for those, for those tenants, um?
Yeah, thank you.
As this could go ahead and affect, um, me, since I'm, you know, I'm the back neighbor directly, I'm directly the back neighbor of seven twelve.
Thank you.
Yeah, if you look at the existing structure, uh, as you drive in, uh, from Meacham Drive, off to the right of the building, uh, down the side about halfway is a door. And that will be the primary access into the apartment. And there'll be two parking spaces right there, close to that door. And those two, uh, spaces will be reserved for the, uh, for the apartment.
So you're saying no access?
Still a public comment. Still a public comment. Any other public comments or questions? Okay. Seeing none, this will be, you're part of the application group, so generally. If you're doing a public comment, we'll have you come down and we'll have you raise your right hand. It's all good. If you'll raise your right hand, say you'll tell the truth, nothing but the truth.
Swear to tell the truth.
Okay, thank you. Yep.
So Ms. Warren said that the apartment wasn't being used for ninety days. That is incorrect. The Gómez's do use the apartment. They have consistently used the apartment to stay for themselves when they stay overnight, usually for a few days at a time. I didn't know if that's?
That's not their primary residence.
No, it's not their primary residence, but they do use it.
Okay.
I didn't know if that was a factor as far as the ninety day thing went.
No, it, uh, we're unable to determine and verify the use since it's not a primary residence. Um, I'm not saying that it's not utilized potentially, um, but there's, you know, instances where evacuations, people may sleep at their office. It's just not something I can verify has been continuously used at the scale of what you're asking.
I understand that, okay.
So it was, it wasn't trying to make it sound bad for him?
Yeah.
No, 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 I get it.
Thank you for the comment.
Oh, okay. And then as far as the yard goes, I guess, or as far back as what the lady was, was saying was, uh, it wouldn't be an issue, like, to put a fence up. I mean, it's not something we're opposed to. We'd be more than happy to determine our property line versus hers, and if that's a concern of hers.
Privacy fence or some sort.
Yeah, I don't think that would be an issue at all.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. You're, you're in it now. You're going to stay up here with them while we have questions. Other comments? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close public comment. And now we'll open it up to staff. Or does not staff to the, uh, commission. Uh, did we already get staff feedback? I don't think we did on this, actually.
Um, so staff, um, has made the determination. After review of the application, the request for the single-family dwelling, uh, to be used as a long-term rental does not meet the requirement of the multifamily development of the C two community commercial district. However, the development has an existing apartment that was built prior to the district overlay, and, um, the structure was constructed in nineteen seventy-two. The request to rehabilitate the apartment to be used for long-term rental only is an identified need, um, under the comprehensive master plan and the housing study for the village of Riedoso. Applicants intend to renovate the structure for light manufacturing on phase one, retail on phase two. Both the retail and portion and dwelling portions of the buildings will be brought into compliance with all building codes, firewalls, and will meet the parking requirements. Um, the use of the dwelling unit is, uh, requires its own, uh, two spaces, uh, separate from the additional uses. And, um, the applicants have shown that they can provide that and keep them solely designated for that use, to which it would not be negative on either inhabitant. Um, so staff does make the recommendation of approval for this request. So staff does make the recommendation of approval for this request.
Great, thank you. Now commissioners, we can open it up for questions for the applicants. Go ahead, Bill.
Same thing we were probably both gonna ask is, is you don't have an issue with putting in a privacy fence between that and your neighbor behind you there?
We would prefer not to because like the openness and, but if, if it's necessary, we would, yes.
Challenge when you get these uses between, you know, light industrial and residential, that property that's right on the edge of it is one of those things where, you know, I'm inclined to, that you have to put a privacy fence in there to give them their little bit of peace of mind. I mean, you're not talking about a large expense in the grand scheme of what you're looking to do. If you're successful, it's not gonna be, it's not gonna be an additional burden and I don't know, I can't remember what for privacy fences, Stephanie, is there a limit on the height or what should they typically be according to code?
It depends on the structure material, how they wanna do it, it'll string in a magnitude of different events.
Okay, I mean, would that be something you'd be willing to talk to the neighbors about what would help alleviate their concerns?
Yes.
To do it? Okay. That'd be the only thing I would add is just put the condition, put a privacy fence on, you know, with consulting with the neighbors that helps screen their activities from the adjoining residents.
Great, so, thank you.
That's all I had.
I, a question I had, I asked it earlier incorrectly, but I'll ask it again. The intention is either long-term rental or when you guys are in town to stay at this apartment?
No, the intent is long-term rental.
Long-term rental, okay.
I might add that we had a condition of no short term. Yeah. You know, I want to encourage the long term, but yeah.
And we do too. That's the reason we bought the property is for the long term. We already have, I'll say, a short-term rental residence or building and we know how to handle short term. This is intent was long term.
Other questions?
Just to reiterate, it is an encouragement of the master plan to have mixed use like this. Is that not correct?
It is encouraged to try and promote the infill to allow for accommodating uses of residential to the commercial activities to promote the infill. Also recently, this particular stretch of Meacham was brought into the MRA district, which also encourages avenues on being able to develop and try and bring in the mixture of both to bring in vibrancy and infill for the housing needs. And the fires and floods last year definitely didn't help the shortage that we have for those numbers.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir. Based upon the foregoing findings of fact fifty-four dash sixty-eight, fifty-four dash one forty-one, and fifty-four dash one hundred of the village code, I move to grant the requested conditional use approval for KCU dash two zero two, two five dash two two with the condition stated in the case report.
Plus, plus no SDR.
Well, hold up, we gotta. If we're, if we're doing it by Robert's rules, we gotta respond to that motion or we gotta make a motion to amend the motion. So is there a motion to amend the motion?
Want to amend the motion and make it a long-term, long-term rental? Do we wanna include anything on the fence or just make that a good faith measure?
Included in the.
Okay. So we're gonna require privacy fence between neighbor and the rear as well. Is that good enough for you?
Okay, so to make it a little more clear, as written with the addition of prohibition of short-term rentals within the residential portion of the building and to add this screening between business and residential property.
Yes. Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Move to a roll call vote, seeing no discussion.
Commissioner Briers?
Aye.
Commissioner Hall?
Aye.
Commissioner McAlina?
Aye.
Commissioner Richardson?
Aye.
Commissioner Rigsby?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, let's move on to our last quasi judicial hearing. E, conditional use twenty twenty-five dash twenty-three. Alex, I believe this is you.
Thank you, Chairman Rigsby. So this is a request for conditional use to convert to commercial offices that would into lodging units or dwelling units within the C-two commercial district. Mr. Nichols is the applicant and he is here this afternoon to speak on the case.
Great. Mr. Nichols, you wanna come down? If you'll raise your right hand, say you'll tell the truth, nothing but the truth.
Swear to tell the truth, nothing but the truth.
Thank you. Great, tell us what you're looking to do.
All right, so my name is Brett and I consider myself like a small-time developer in this community. Basically what I've had previously done is I'd received approval from the commission in twenty twenty-one and I thought I was doing everything right and apparently basically need to reapply for it again, so I'm here again as a result of that. And that's pretty much the main thing I'm doing, so. I've got two units I've had there for a long time and I've already fixed one of them up a lot, like a lot of those cosmetic stuff. Got some photos of it too, if you guys are interested later. It's a project that I've already had going in this direction for a long time and I'm really hoping that I can still do that because I've already done so much work on it. But I understand the need for long-term housing here too and I've had a long-term rental I provide for people here in this community for over ten years just to kinda do my part because I do own some short terms as well. But we need housing here so much that from a development standpoint, I'm just excited to work with the village of Riedoso and you guys to continue developing in this community and mine's for lodging, so allows for short term as well. But I want you guys to understand that I'm gonna be developing with a long-term in mind from now on too, especially since I just lost the property in the fire and burned down. And I'm gonna use that lot over there to potentially build some kind of multifamily on that property near the showman. But anyway, I just really appreciate the support, whatever we can do to get me to the next step on this. And I have short term on there as well because I like to use the property, you brought up these guys potentially using the property and like this is like my spot in town when I, I live in Alto as well, so it's like, I can't go back and forth and just get lunch. So it's like, I work in this spot sometimes too, but I wanna be able to rent it out on the weekends sometimes. While, anyway, that's pretty much the main thing. It's a big part of, the way I developed it, I developed it very high-end so far to where I could charge four hundred dollars a night for the place, so it's not like ready for long-term someone to come in because I've turned my property over numerous times now and it's pretty costly to turn over the long-term rentals most of the time. Gotta replace all the carpet and stuff like that. Anyhow, I'm gonna continue doing that with my other property and any new developments I work on aside from commercial developments are gonna be for long-term. Anyhow, that's it.
Great, thank you. Is there any public comments? I think we just have one person on Zoom.
I think that that's her from before.
Yeah, still gotta give her the opportunity. Okay, we'll go ahead and close public comment. And we'll move, Stephanie, do you mind talking about the letters that were sent? And then Steph's recommendation, or is this you, Alex?
It's Alex.
No worries. So there was, we did send out the thirteen letters, one was returned back to us and we did receive a comment from the doctor and Mrs. Seidel. They have since rescinded or recounted what was put into your packet on, through the email that was included in your information that you got today.
Thank you. And then did this, did you give a staff's recommendation yet?
So when we looked at this, the part of the commercial, the conditional use is looking at what is the surrounding area. Surrounding area is commercial in nature. Short-term rentals are typically located within residential areas and in fact our code, chapter fifty-four, allows for the short-term rental overlay, applies only in non-commercial residential property. So within the commercial two district, there is a permitted use of a lodging facility, but that requires five or more rental units. Again, with sort of like what Stephanie mentioned with the last case as well. The housing availability and affordability have been concerns in the current comp plan that was done in twenty nineteen. Over the last few years, those concerns have been increased due to economic and the conditions, economic conditions as well as the fires and the floods that have removed a number of units from, of long-term housing units from, from use as well as the increase in the number of short-term rentals that we've seen for that. Therefore, the staff does recommend denial of their quest to allow this property for a lodging or a short-term use. However, we would say that the commission may wish to consider the conditional use allowing for a long-term rental situation at these two units with the conditions that they pull the building permits to allow for that change of occupancy and also that there would be two parking spaces on site for each unit for their exclusive use.
Thank you. Okay, commissioners, why don't we go ahead and open it up? Questions for the applicant?
Are either of these two units currently permitted as a short-term rental?
No, sir.
What type of parking do you have for these units at this point in time?
Honestly, we have a substantial amount of parking at the building. We have forty-three parking spots at the building and I own two units and I've, well, I sold, I actually had a third unit that I owned earlier in twenty twenty-four. Sold it to a physical therapist who's been in there and he's great, so can't complain having a physical therapist in the building's great.
So these units are condo minimized?
Minimized, you mean?
Condo minimized as far as their own individual, each unit?
Exactly, yes, sir.
Okay, my question too is, is there full separation for, and allowance for residential use next to commercial use? Because when I've looked into that in the past, you had to have, you know, two-hour firewall that went thirty inches above and all that stuff. Is that?
Yes, sir. So that's part of the process we're having to do to go through, to change of use, as a change of use permit, I guess. It's a change of occupancy, I guess.
That would be through the occupancy permit. We've had a conversation with our building official, Mr. Myers, with Mr. Nichols to go through the necessary changes for that change of occupancy from a commercial to a residential use.
In this building, it's obviously different owners. Is there what I would equate to an HOA or like a payment into?
There is, and originally whenever I did this process and I went B and Z before in twenty twenty-one and had it approved, we had to actually amend the condo association bylaws, so everyone signed off on it back then and we had to record that with the county. So the COAs have been amended to allow for this whenever I originally filed approved for it.
And staff has validated that or do you have a copy of that filing with the court, with the?
We have investigated that and saw that there, we saw the original and we saw the amended on that. But of course, would remind the commission that the, any kind of covenants would be a private matter between those owners.
I think, but I did, out of respect for my neighbors, of course, like I, they all know what's going on and everything with it. They were kinda surprised to see it come up again and that's why I had the gentleman that originally had said like, wait a sec. So I called him and we're, we're good there, so.
Yeah, just so we're kinda clear that we're looking at this as it's brand new. I know that you might have gotten the approval in twenty twenty-one, but now it's, since the time has elapsed and you haven't adhered to the conditions within the conditional use, we have to look at it kind of fresh.
Well, on that note too, I was, just so you guys know, I was not aware of the conditions at that time and that was kinda when the whole thing was happening with Samantha and that was in that whole time process, so. Got lost in the shuffle there somewhere. I didn't, I wasn't aware of the conditions. Now I'm aware of the conditions and I just want to move forward as a developer to work with you guys in the community to develop, put this project behind me and move on to the next kinda thing, but anyhow.
Yeah, Josh, go ahead.
I think in response to the staff recommendations on the commercial, with the short-term rental situation, just to remind everyone, we did approve one a couple of years ago right there by Sits Mark. It was a commercial property and they had a, we approved a short-term rental on the unit in front right there. At Sits Mark, that was the same situation, I believe.
I actually think it was, and we'll hear from staff on that one, I think it was actually a different situation because there wasn't actually that use at the time and now it's no longer permitted as a short-term rental. They didn't adhere to that.
They never used it as that, but we approved it as a short-term.
That property did have illegal conversions in there, bringing it to a residential type of structure. They were required to bring the building into compliance with all building codes. That application failed to meet those and that approval no longer stands.
Okay, perfect. Other questions for the applicant?
I have a comment. I mean, I, I, we did that whole rewrite of fifty-four for the short-term rentals, we looked at it. I, I think where we have started to draw the lines is you gotta be an actual lodging facility, a motel, hotel, bed and breakfast, where you have five or more units and then if you wanna do short-term rentals with less than that, it's on the R-one district is where we've, that's how it stands today. And I don't know if I necessarily agree about providing exceptions to that overlay district. It would be my two cents. I think developing this as a long-term is a great idea. You got approval within the condo association or the building association. But I worry about setting those precedents because we've fought so, not fought. We've had many discussions about people buying up cheap C-two properties and trying to turn them into short-term rentals because they think they can make some more money. So that's my comment.
I guess a question for Commissioner Nichols, would you be opposed to making these long-term? I know you said you didn't want to, but.
I mean, I guess I'm not completely opposed to the idea and that's part of like why, I mean, I just, the finish out that I've already done on one of them that I've done the most work on so far is it's like way too high-end to allow somebody to long-term rent it. It would just be like, I mean, I spent forty thousand dollars on it, it's like very, very nice. And to allow someone to go in, if I charge them fifteen hundred bucks, like that's gonna be years before I even break even on what I spent on it recently. But, I mean, I was just developing with that in mind. I thought that was approved, but I understand that's something we really can't consider at this point. I don't wanna set any precedent either, but I suppose, I mean, I'm not closed-minded to it at all. I'd like to at least be able to rent them for short-term for a period of time to recoup some of that initial investment. When they get a little wear and tear on them, maybe long-term them at that point, might be something to suggest, but it's like, go ahead.
So access into these units is through like a set of doors that goes into a common area, right?
So there's an exterior door on each of these units that people can just not have to disturb the lobby or the commercial space whatsoever? So they can just come in through their own door?
In other words, these doors on the backside?
Exactly, on the porch.
That doesn't look high-end.
I know, it's the idea. It's a sleeper on the outside, man. I got some photos I'd be happy to show you. It looks terrible on the outside. That's kinda the idea, to be honest.
So I thought last time when we did approve this, because I was here, I thought we did, you were kinda leaning toward the long-term.
I prefer that in a lot of ways just because it's less management, so I'm not closed-minded to that and I know we need it here.
And we need it next to the hospital. I mean, there are a lot of.
I mean, I guess the only reason why I'd really like to be able to still have what I, the short-term, you know, is because I can come use it during the week, you know, when no one's there, I come in there, have the internet, have everything I need. It's right here in town and like that's kinda what it is to me right now. I'd lose it if I had a long-term tenant in there all the time. I'm sorry, go ahead.
The forty thousand dollars worth of renovations you've done today, that's unpermitted work.
Um, I mean, yes and no. So it's like, I'm talking about furniture and everything. So it's like, that's paint, that's changing all the receptacles out, new light fixtures. You're repairing, there was like a leak in the roof that we repaired some drywall on that, that I maybe needed to get a permit for that, that I didn't, so.
But for the point that was previously asked by Commissioner Briers is that you'd still have to rip out a wall, you have to put a two-hour firewall in between both units and then the unit to the commercial. So you're still moving out that furniture, messing with that paint.
I just put all brand-new carpet in there and stuff, but I mean, yeah, basically I thought that I had enough Type X on there already, but after speaking to David, I need more, either type, more Type X on top of that or I've been looking at these other products that provide even better fire protection. It's more of like a paint that if it gets, if it gets a fire nearby, it expands and creates a three-hour firewall. So that's really the solution I'm looking at for that right now, to separate the two units, because I would still have to finish that part of it.
And it's gotta be continuous through the attic all the way through the.
It goes to this, it'd go to the top of the roof, yes, sir. I'd probably break some drywall out for that probably. I'd probably break some drywall out for that probably, it sounds like.
What other questions do we have for the applicant?
No, no, other than, I don't think of, like I said, if they've got, done work without permits or inspection, that's kind of, that's on you.
Yeah.
That's on you, that's not.
Yeah, well, I mean, most of the stuff we did was cosmetic, to be honest, so. I mean, that was the recommendation I had from the plumber. He's like, don't move anything when you do this and you won't have a problem like if you don't move stuff.
Is that plumber licensed in the village?
Yes, sir. Said, don't move any drains and you'll be, and water lines and you'll be okay as well. He said it'd be cheaper that way too.
So one of the things that we consider for conditional use is the effects on health, safety, general welfare and occupants of surrounding lands, existing and anticipated traffic conditions, including parking, streets and lands, impact of nature, environment, and then how it impacts the comprehensive plan. I don't believe, because this is within a C2 district, there are other similar short-term rentals below the five units. I think there's only one in the area that is a lodging unit beyond, beyond five. Is that your understanding of the area?
Well, I'm a little confused about that honestly, because there used to be another rental right behind their building, but it seems to still be C2, but maybe that wasn't permitted or something. I just know that there's two buildings behind our building that look like houses, they're just like houses back there.
Dr. Gueder owned them.
Yeah, I think she still owns one of them and then someone else owned the other one and they were doing short-term out of that. So I don't know if that's changed or not.
Steph, do we know if that's permit?
I haven't heard of any short-term rental permits in the area. I do know that those two previously were built as single-family residences prior to the overlay.
Okay.
So those are technically lawful, non-conforming uses.
Okay.
So they're both long-term rentals or something that's behind there, right?
What other questions do we have?
I don't have any questions. Just like you said, I'm, I'm inclined to just leave it as a long-term rental and not set the precedent of putting short-term rentals in commercial districts.
Yeah. Could I have short-term for a small period of time or something to at least, just like?
Conditions are with the property, so. Well, it's always a possibility, but I don't think in this case, from my perspective, that it makes sense to do it for partial. So if there's a commission, if there's a motion from the commission, I'd listen or I'd entertain it.
I'll do it.
Way to go.
Based upon the foregoing findings of fact per 54-68, 54-141, and 54-100 of the Village Code, I move to grant the requested conditional use for KCU 2025-23 with the conditions stated in the case report and with the addition of for long-term only.
Second, motion in a second. For discussion, Stephanie, do we, do we need that amendment? Is that clear or do we need to alter the language?
Yes, approval of the two single-family residences to be prohibited from short-term rental activity.
Okay. Uh, any other discussion? Let's roll, move to roll call vote.
Commissioner Byers.
Aye.
Commissioner Hall.
Aye.
Commissioner McElina.
Aye.
Commissioner Richardson.
Aye.
Commissioner Ritchie.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Nichols. Appreciate it, appreciate your time and send through all those other cases too. It's always the worst being the last one, so I appreciate your time today.
No charge for the entertainment.
I think Stephanie will need to make a modification to your case report and then she'll either email it to you or you can come grab it.
Okay. Or some new long-term's going to be available, folks.
Good to know, I appreciate it.
You'll have a problem.
All right. Let's move to the community development report. Alex, thank you.
Yes, thank you. So first off, I would like to thank you all, particularly the three of you that were part of the short-term rental subcommittee. Would note that that was passed by the council with a modification to allow for the increase of the permit fee to $300 and on, on a year. All the rest of the recommendations that were put into that ordinance were passed. And so that ordinance will go into effect on April 1st is what we're aiming for. We do have a pending request for proposals for the software to run the program as that company that we were working with did not have a state contract that we could go under. So we're going in that direction. We're getting actually interest from other firms, so that is coming. Responses are due back on that on the 13th and we'll go from there with, with that. Also in note to the zoning case that was done back in January, that also was approved by the council. So we now have a, a new piece of C2 zoning on Highway 70 and we'll anticipate reinvestment in, in that RV park and potential new development along with that. Besides that, we are also seeing short-term rental. The number of units or permits seem to, right now is stabilizing around 1,300, a little bit more than 1,300, which is about 100, 150 down from where we were pre-fire. But the, also with the lodgers tax, we were also starting to see that come back. I think our latest number is about 90% of what it was in 2024 as, as well. So I do think we're seeing recovery there. And with that, I would entertain questions that you may have.
And this may be, this will be something I'll ask the village next week. Is given, you know, we went through the recommendations for the initial permit fees. I want to be sure that the village has enough job code set up to, when resources are pulled from either planning to deal with short-term rentals or fire or police, we need to track that time so that when you get to that point, you, we don't face the same litany of questions of why are you charging us this much to do it?
So I will be able, I could respond a little bit to that. So we, we are already working with the police department, the fire department to be sure that they are, the police department already is doing, and dispatch are also doing a good job in categorizing calls that are related to short-term rentals. We are making sure that we have our GIS layer map updated so that they can easily ascertain at dispatch if it is a short-term rental. And we are also in the process of coming up with some data points. We, that all the departments here in the village can track anything that is, is a, can be attributed to a short-term rental. We've also had a conversation with the solid waste department as, as well. They are already noting those situations where they have to either hand remove bags from, from dumpsters due to over, overstuffing. And, and so we have the general locations at, at worst and specific locations, ideally with, with them. What were, there is another thought that I, oh, also in the budget process, we will be talking through, which starts tomorrow. We kick that off here at the village for the next fiscal year. We'll be then also talking through the additional staff person that is anticipated to be hired in order to do the annual inspections.
Yeah, I, I just wanted to be sure we're capturing all of the associated activity related to short-term rentals that, you know, that's usually, as I said, the way we used to do it, when I, like for me, it was capital and non-capital projects. You had job codes where if you spent an hour on a capital project, that time was at least captured. So you know what that effect is, it's not only that time, but it's an hour away from your primary duties. And you'd go through that for six months to a year. You'll have a better idea of what the permit fees can be to actually support the software support, because that was one of our key things. We want it to be self-sustaining and self-sufficient and, you know, that's, I still think.
Bill wants to turn everybody into attorneys, you know, every 15 minutes. Bill in at six, six, six-minute intervals. Yeah, that's right.
I worked with some rather interesting accountants in the course of my career, so they can be valuable.
Real quick, can you give us updates on the Rock House? I forget the address on Meacham.
603 Meacham, yes. So that property, all the homes are on their foundations, are on their sites. As of, yeah, that was just this morning. It's been a long, interesting day. We are now anticipating the project to be wrapped up mid-May. Utilities are, are going in and so we are in, I guess, the, the final push. I'll make an assumption here, so it was indicated to the council that we do have the first two units that were put on the site, but also the first two that are closest to Meacham are cleaned, ready for people to go through. So if you would like to, to do that, let us know and we'll see if we can get you in there to, to, to see the, the finished product. I've been in there before, it was, it was looking pretty good, but they didn't have it quite spick and span. It was been several months back, but those are, those are nice, nice homes.
Okay. Are we issuing building permits now? Because I saw that in January we had 89, but I haven't seen any since then. Are we still on a moratorium?
We, we are not, we are not on a moratorium in regard to issuing the building permits with the exception for those properties that until we get the flood map finalized, which is looking like it's going to happen next week, we'll, we'll have that. People are able to go through the process and we've probably had a, I'll, I'll say, I think we can still count on one hand the number that have, that we've been able to make a determination that their property was not substantially damaged and therefore that we could then issue either a repair, I think in, in most cases, if not all the cases, it's been a, a permit to repair, repair structures.
Great.
Before you go on to the next one, I just want to say we didn't forget about you, Bill, last month, so sorry. But happy late birthday to Bill. Happy birthday this month to Bart and Jacob, so I hope, yep.
Did everybody sign already?
Yes, everybody should be good to go, you were the last one.
Thank you. Did you get that 100 I put in there?
It's missing, both of them, it's missing. That must have gone to Stephanie.
Oh, gosh, who signed that card last?
In addition to planning zoning cases, Alex and I have put on a request to schedule a public hearing. We did receive an appeal request for the 106 Torion. So if the appeal is, a request is granted next week, council, I will send you all an email letting you know the updated public hearing time.
Is that the one where they wanted to like subdivide?
The carport.
Oh, the carport.
Yes.
Thank you.
Where are we at on the building on Nob Hill up there that burnt last year? Is it going to be torn down?
That is currently a code enforcement case and I believe it potentially may be subject to municipal court. I'm not quite sure, but code enforcement is actively handling that.
Right on. Anything else?
I do, actually, I don't want to bring this up, but I really need to. Guy I know since 1980, Hans Bracka, but he knew that I was on P and Z and he came to me and he asked, he wanted to build a fence out in front of his yard and I said, he said, what do I do? I said, take a plat and draw on there what you want to do and take it down to the village and let them tell you what you need to do. And I said, and if they tell you they don't need a permit, you need to either get it in writing or get it, get it recorded. Well, he did and he got it recorded and then he was given a stop-work order. He was told he did not need it. And my point is that I feel like, first off, that I was put in a position advising a guy what to do and I felt like I gave him good advice, you know, draw it on a plat and, and take it to the village and they'll tell you. Well, he didn't, they told him and he's got a, a recording. Unfortunately, they did go ahead and give him a permit for the, to do the work and stuff. But the point being, you know, I, why did I tell him to record it? Because I didn't really trust, I mean, I, I remember Tim Dodge telling me stuff that, you know, three months later, he said, I never said that, you know. So basically, I'm, I'm, I had to tell the general public to cover their ass, be, you know, by getting proof.
Yeah.
Anyways, so I, I think that we need to be more transparent. I think we should encourage people to pull out their phone and record what they are being told at the front desk when they come in and make a request, you know. We should be beholden to what we tell people, because this is, we work for the community.
Yeah.
You know?
Is there a trained person that can give guidance at the front desk or does everybody have to come to you, Steph?
I'll answer, I'll answer that. So we are working through with changes to our process, changes to how we do things to, to address those issues that have come up.
That's kind of a platitude, a little bit. I, I guess my question is, and I know, I said that flippantly, I know that you guys are doing your best, so.
And I do too. I'm all for, y'all are great.
Is there, is that, because he went to the front desk to get this information? Is there somebody that knows the permits that can comment on the front desk or do they need to come to you for each of these cases?
They, they do, they do not need to come to us and I'm not going to get into the details of, of, because I would say we would dispute what has been put out there.
Okay, let's take a step back from the specific instance and maybe you can help, because we need to give people direction. And so if we say, whatever they tell you at the front desk is good.
I've got the recording.
You know, let's, again, step back from the specific instance. Is there somebody at the front desk that can comment on permit items or do they need to come to you?
The direction that we have given to Britta at the front desk, or whoever is at the front desk, if they do not know the answer to that question, to find the person who does.
Okay.
To give the answer.
And I assume, and again, we know you guys are doing the right things, that you, whenever there's a question like that, you try to give a paper trail response.
Yes.
Okay. Okay. So I guess the feedback for us as commissioners, they should be able to grant, they should be able to answer your question at the front desk, but if not, email Alex and Stephanie would be what I would say.
Yes, I would agree with that.
Or tweet at Ron Sena.
I would rather everybody get a permit than just be told you don't need one. I mean, and, you know, it has to be some form of writing either through email or verification or something.
Yeah. Thank you for the community development report. I appreciate you both to underline that. Commissioners, other comments, questions, concern?
I just, from the village perspective, I would encourage you to make more active drive-bys in some of the flood areas because there's, there's a whole lot of activity going on now. And I know it's in either a floodway or a floodplain and I can guarantee you that they did not pull permits. You just got to get out there and look. I mean, that's.
Please, please bring those things to our attention as, as you're, you know, I'm pretty sure you're aware of the staffing that, that we have. So we also rely upon the public to bring those things to our attention. Thanks.
All right, seeing no other comments, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
So I got a motion, seconds, we'll, if there's no discussion, we'll do a, a voice vote. All those in favor of adjourning?
Aye.
Any opposed? We're adjourned.